Council Agenda Township Porcipony Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of October 8, 2024. Introduction Posting a Notice. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the Retirement to the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 20, 2023 where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and New York Star Ledger on December 26, 2023. Now please ask everyone to stand for the flash salute. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Here.
I said, "Mr. Hernandez," I mean Council President.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella. Here. Now, Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Neglia, I'm sorry.
Here.
Also present are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Crin, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Municipal Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, upcoming meetings, 10:22, 24 at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting, 11:00, 12:00, 24 at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting. No ordinances at this time. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public to speak on any matter, you have five minutes to speak.
Bob. Nah, yeah, that would be a great disappointment, Bob.
My name is Bob Venizia and I'm from Porcipony. I feel so strongly against pilots, specifically residential pilots, but I just can't let certain pilot-related statements go unchallenged. At the last council meeting, the mayor repeated a statement that he's often made. That is, pilots do not create school-aged children. The mayor is correct that commercial pilots do not create school-aged children. On the other hand, residential pilots can and do add students to our school system. Here's how that happens. Suppose a developer, such as 1515 Route 10, presents plans before the council to build 500 apartments, some of which are affordable housing units. If completed, the development will probably send 75 to 100 children to our schools. However, without a pilot, the developer claims that the project is not economically feasible. Simply stated, no pilot equals no apartments and no students, whereas the granting of a pilot will result in both. So yes, pilots can and do generate school-aged children. The typical argument that you hear from the other side is that because of affordable housing laws, we're going to get development and students whether there is a pilot or not. That may be true, but if the development and the students are inevitable, doesn't it make sense to collect, say, $3 million in conventional taxes rather than $1 million in pilot payments? And similarly, residential pilots do add schoolchildren and the cost to educate them to the school system. Add on the cost for municipal services and man-made infrastructure improvements now, including $6 million water wells. And the result is that a residential pilot is a huge money loser for Porcipony and should never be granted. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to have the council briefly review the consent agenda which will be voted on at the next council meeting of October 22. Do we have any questions with regards to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to presentations, Mayor.
Thank you, Colette. Tonight I'll be presenting the three Norbit Sasakalaski Senior Citizen Awards. And then I'll answer the questions about the pilots. At the Chinese, four years in high school, I don't remember any of it. And then Shexia, I know that one, so. I remember some stuff. So, first of all, congratulations. This is a proclamation from the Township Porcipony Troy Hills where the Sasakalaski Senior Citizen of the Year Award was created by an endowment of Jean Sokolowski, who was a tireless volunteer dedicating her time to the McCullough Hall Museum in Morristown, the Daughters of the American Revolution and other causes. And whereas, the Sasakalaski Senior Citizen of the Year Award recognizes a Porcipony resident of over 60 years of age who demonstrates the power of making a difference in the community through volunteerism. Whereas, in recognizing the need for senior citizens to better maintain their health and physical well-being, Florence organized and conducts a weekly exercise class free of charge, as well as outings to nearby parks and walking paths. And whereas Florence coordinated the annual Chinese New York performance, consistently drew her larger attendance for over 10 years, assists with the Mandarin translation at the senior set in Tai Chi classes, and is the longtime president of the Ping Pong Club. And whereas Florence Khan has extended herself in a multitude of areas, offering computer assistance, translation services, and general life navigation of Porcipony seniors as needed. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the Mayor of the Township Porcipony Troy Hills, hereby present this proclamation as a token of respect and admiration for Florence Khan, and urge residents of our community to follow her example of service to community dated this 8th day of October 2024. That's for you.
Barberio, Council President Paul Karifi Jr., and Michelle Pickle, and all my ping pong and tai chi and grand dancing, healthy bones friends. They all here, they all came here to support me tonight. I also want to thank you those who nominated and selected me for the award.
Honestly, you deserve any of it. I can play ping pong, so.
Okay, I'll continue to be the president of the Ping Pong Club and be nice, be kind, and be helpful. Thank you so much.
Peggy Smith. First of all, congratulations. Proclamation of the Township Porcipony Troy Hills, whereas the Sokolowski Senior Citizen of the Year Award was created by an endowment by Jean Sokolowski, who was a tireless volunteer dedicating her time to the McCullough Hall Museum in Morristown, the Daughters of the American Revolution and other causes. And whereas, the Sokolowski Senior Citizen of the Year Award recognizes a Porcipony resident of over 60 years of age who demonstrates the power of making a difference in the community through volunteerism. And whereas Peggy Smith has been a volunteer with the Friends of the Porcipony Library since 2019, beginning at the Little Look, an ongoing Friends book sale at the main library, to becoming co-president along with the reshut of Friends at the Porcipony Library in 2020. And whereas, under Peggy's guidance, fundraising efforts for the Friends grew from $2 in 2021 to $15,000 in 2022, an astounding $27,174 in 2023. Wow, that's a lot. Yeah, I think so, $2,000. I mean, I could beat $2,000. The bulk of which is used to fund the library programs such as summer and the winter readings, the Tiny Art Show, Lake High Rock Library, Halloween Party, The Valley at the main library, Community Read, and the purchase of the items of the library of things. And whereas, in addition to fundraising, Peggy gives her time countless hours a week working at the Nook, supporting book donations, attending to administrative tasks, and Friends at the Library's social media presence. And whereas Peggy Smith has been described as passionate, dedicated, tenacious, and extremely deserving of recognition. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the Mayor of the Township Porcipony Troy Hills, hereby present this proclamation as a token of respect and admiration for Peggy Smith, and urge residents of our community to follow her example of service and community dated this 8th day of October 2024. That's for you. Thank you. If you can raise that kind of money, you can help us out with our budget.
You know, I'm very lucky in my senior years to be able to do something that I enjoy so much. I never did fundraising in all the volunteer work. I've done much throughout my life in Porcipony. But I took on the library and through the sale of books that the community has donated. It's like Christmas morning, I always say on Monday morning when we go into the library and we see wonderful, wonderful books that people in Porcipony have collected. I've lived here 40 years, 45 years, and I never would have known, you know, what was inside people's houses. I couldn't have done it without all our volunteers, which were a small group but very, very dedicated, and people worked very hard for the library.
You do as well, so. Congratulations to them, thank you.
Mayor, I didn't pose. I guess I didn't.
I've known Doris for many years. I'm not going to get yelled at tonight. Guess everybody knows you over here, huh?
Uh, yeah.
Exactly.
Great friend.
Yep.
Good sister.
And you're a good person too, so that's what makes it easy. So proclamation of the Township Porcipony Troy Hills, and I'm going to read it all over again because it's worth it.
Okay.
So whereas the Sokolowski Senior Citizen of the Year Award was created by the endowment by Jean Sokolowski, who was tireless volunteer dedicating her time to the McCullough Hall Museum in Morristown, the Daughters of the American Revolution and other causes. And whereas, the Sokolowski Senior Citizen of the Year Award recognizes a Porcipony resident of over 60 years of age who demonstrates the power of making a difference in the community through volunteerism. And whereas Doris O'Rourke is in her sixth year as president of the Golden Age Club of St. Peter's Roman Catholic Church in Porcipony, where she works tirelessly on behalf of senior citizens by helping them stay active, creating a place to socialize, and assisting them in navigating any issues that they may encounter. And whereas Doris is a devoted parishioner of St. Peter's, the Apostle Roman Catholic Church, where she is Eucharist minister, is a dedicated member of the Rosary Altar Society, and tirelessly volunteers with the homebound ministry, where she visits with people who are ill, alone, homebound, and unable to attend the Mass. Whereas, in addition, Doris volunteers at the nursing home by helping where needed and by transporting residents to the chapel and setting up for Mass. And whereas Doris O'Rourke believes that volunteering is a significant and vital part of life, providing help to those in need, as well as creating and fostering empathy and compassion for our fellow man. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, of the Township Porcipony Troy Hills, hereby present this proclamation as a token of respect and admiration for Doris O'Rourke, and urge residents of our community to follow her example of service to community dated this 8th day of October 2024.
Well, thank you. As I told Michelle, when she came in and told me that I had won this, I told her this is not what I do it for. And she insisted, so I'm good with that now. It took me time, but I'm good with it now. But I do appreciate everybody that I deal with in that community center. They're fantastic people and they deserve to be helped. And there's a lot of people out there that do need to be helped. So that's what I'm here for, and thank you so much.
I want to thank all the recipients for all you do for the community of Porcipony Troy Hills. And that's what makes Porcipony a great town. Those that volunteer their time to help others in need, and it truly is appreciated. Doris, I've known you for many years and I know your commitment to this community as well. Deb, with the books, that's phenomenal what you've done with the Friends at the Library and Friend. I can't play ping pong because if I win, I might jump over the net as a victory chant.
I want to see that.
That being said, thank you for what you do for the community of Porcipony because in all reality, it's each helping hand that keeps moving us forward. So thank you and God bless you. I think I said it, I'm over 60 years of age. Okay, Council President, I'm going to be going probably all over the place. I wrote some stuff down that I want to talk about in my report. I'll just wait.
You guys are more than welcome to stay, but you don't have to if you want to, if you guys want to leave now. Congratulations again.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Doris. See you Thursday.
Okay, I'm going to start this off on a positive note and end on a positive note.
I like that.
This Saturday, October 5, I had the honor of performing a wedding, with two individuals are in the audience tonight, and that's Michael Smith and Jamie Smith now, or Jamie Welsh. And it's actually a very nice event and I appreciate, and I really felt very honored that you asked me to do the wedding. So thank you so very much. I'm going to give an update on the Baldwin Road repairs update, but you know, the line has been fixed and we're looking at milling of the road starting approximately on October 16. And I say approximately because sometimes when they give a date, it's never that date. So, and paving should proceed that on October 17. As for the pilot, the total concerns reported year-to-date is 632. Number of closed concerns are 601, which is 95% closed. Number of concerns in progress is 26, which is 4%. And number of open concerns is 5, and that's 1%, and that's carried over from the last meeting that we had. So I've been getting some questions asked of me about Route 46 now, and I explained what was going on to Route 46 of the crossing by Baldwin Road, and you know, people getting killed crossing the road. And we did meet with the Commissioner with regards to that, so pretty much the update, waiting on the state with regards to them. They're going to be probably putting a fence up. We're going to see what kind of fence they're going to put up that's aesthetically appealing to the township. And our concerns of individuals still crossing the roadways, but there's only one way to prevent it. We can't have a police officer on every corner of every cross of highway, so the fence might be the only alternative that the state has, not the township. So now I'm going to get to North Bevick Road. Now as you know, right now, we're doing a streetscape on North Bevick Road, and a lot of the residents have contacted the township wanting to know what's going to be done. And to be totally honest, it's not going to be done for a while, because this is only Phase 1. Phase 1 of the beautification of North Bevick Road. So with that being said, you have to be very blunt and candid and honest. This is not going to be done by the end of October. You know, there's a lot of things that happen when you are repairing a roadway. Water lines have to be, you know, amended, and that's what we're going through right now. So in all reality, I don't see this thing being concluded and going into next year. Also, I'd like to commend District 5 Fire Department for its relief effort for those in North Carolina from Hurricane Helene, which has caused damage across the state of North Carolina and all the things that they're doing for the communities over there like bottled water, non-perishable food, baby food, formulas. So I want to commend all the 5 districts. I know some of them are going to be joining forces with them as well. I also want to take this opportunity, because as you know, and if you don't know, then you haven't been reading social media, but I'm really ecstatic to announce the relationship between myself and the Board of Education, specifically Andy Chaffo. And I'm going to be having meetings with them, visiting their schools and highlighting areas that, you know, are potentially could be projects that the town might be able to do and come up with some sort of an agreement with regards to the pilots. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize the Porcipony School District, which received an impressive A ranking from NIECH. And this recognition highlights the difference commitment to academic excellence, dedicated faculty, and supportive learning environment. With such a high ranking, it's no wonder that families are choosing to come to Porcipony for the children's education. So I want to commend them on that. I think out of 400, 500 and something schools, Porcipony ranks 35. I think that's what it was, and 6th in the county. So, and that gives, with an A ranking. So I want to thank, you know, faculty, teachers, administration for their commitment to the community of Porcipony and its children. And I'm a product of the school system, as Frank and Paul are. We graduated from Porcipony Hills, and so I want to commend them. And Porcipony High is also good, I have to say that, okay, just covering myself. So that being said, but now, there was a comment made tonight, and if I do miss anything here, with regards to, you know, Mr. Venizia coming up saying, when somebody says something, you know, you can't hold back. Well, I'm the same way, and I can't hold back either. And I don't mean that in a negative way. There's nothing wrong with disagreeing how the pilots do not create school-aged children. That's a fallacy. It's housing that does. It's affordable housing, it's any type of housing. A pilot is just a mechanism of financing. That's all a pilot is, and that's why they call it payment of lieu of taxes. So when you hear the word payment of lieu of taxes, it's still a form of a tax. Now, you know, when he mentions, we lose $3 million conventionally, or I think that was the number. I don't know exactly what you said number-wise. We lose either way because if it's not built, if the commercial properties aren't built, what happens? The burden falls on the residents. And he's right, not everything is going to be a pilot, and that's a fact. Now, when you look at pilots, when you look at housing, you look at affordable housing, sometimes what a pilot will do is it will reduce the number of affordable housing units because they don't need as many, as much housing. And it reduces the number because now they have a profit margin. So that's just with that. Now, he mentioned 1515 Route 10. I did not negotiate 1515 Route 10. I wasn't part of that negotiation. And I will admit, there's a lot of units over there with 1515 Route 10, but that's not something I would have negotiated with regards to that. And Mr. Venizia, you're passionate about it and I respect it for that. And there's nothing wrong with us not agreeing, but you know, the facts are the facts when it comes down to the mechanism of all that. So also, I want to discuss, and this is important because I'm still seeing it in town, bike safety, bike safety helmet, safety measures. And I have to tell you, I don't see it happening. I don't see the kids wearing their helmets when they're riding their bikes. We do have a program that I pretty much go around, if I see a child with a helmet, I get out of my vehicle, I give them a Dunkin' Donuts gift card thanking them for wearing their helmets. But we're going to have to really enhance this program because God forbid we don't want to see anybody else. We have cracked down significantly on speeding in Porcipony. I don't know what the numbers are now, but we've enhanced, not enhanced, because you don't want to do that. We've enforced our speeding, anywhere that speeds, you pretty much get a ticket. There's no like way, pretty much to get out of it now. But we have to do this because one thing, I will agree, that we're not going to be able to stop certain things. Now, we filed a lawsuit, we're in with 13 other towns, we're suing the state with regards to the affordable housing. Now let me just explain something real quick, and I'll end this because it's affordable housing is not a bad thing. There are people that cannot afford housing. It's the mechanism that they use, it's the formula that they use. They have no concern about Porcipony's infrastructure. And a perfect example would be the park project that was approved in 2000, I think 20. And that's no administration's fault because you have to adhere to the affordable housing rules. They made the township build two new wells, and those wells are anywhere between $3 to $6 million each to build. Well, who comes up with that money? The township has to come up with it. Now our infrastructure takes a hit, takes a hit. Porcipony Road, I mean, it's going to be pretty much going to be congested, and that's just one area. You take 1515 Route 10, very similar. So now we have to prepare ourselves for a change in our infrastructure. So I felt, and I know the council felt the same way because they approved the resolution, that we have to take a stand. And we have to say to the state, hey, listen, they say Porcipony is affluent. It is in certain areas, but in certain areas it's not. We have low income, we have middle income. I grew up in the apartments, Colonnades Apartments, that was pretty much low to middle income. We have our share of individuals that need help. But the problem with the affordable housing regulations is it's not being built for Porcipony residents. It's being built for the whole entire state. So, and that creates a problem for us because we want to house our senior citizens who can't afford to live in the homes anymore. We want to house our families here that cannot afford to live in homes or even buy a home, but we want to help them out. So I want to make that clear that the township has a responsibility. We have no problem with the affordable housing, but it's the amount, the number they want to give us and the remedy that the developers get. That is what becomes the problem. So I felt that it was necessary for the town update on, I know it's a segue to this, on cannabis. We're working diligently on an ordinance, and hopefully we will present this ordinance at the next council meeting, and we get the whole cannabis thing under control. Because I'll tell you, and I've said this 100 times, right now, we're just hoping to keep our revenues where it's at. Now we had a meeting with our rating agency, and the meeting went very well. In fact, they were not ecstatic, I shouldn't say that. They were happy how we're maintaining our financial stability here in Porcipony. You're always concerned they're going to downgrade you, but they didn't. They kept us where we're at, saying Porcipony has improved, Porcipony has bounced back, and they commended us, saying that we have surplus or a fund balance on all our utilities, and that was very important for them to, and they recognized that. So I want to take this, you know, time to thank the administration, our CFO, and everybody that worked very hard to get us back on track. We're back on track, and I'm happy to say that. And there's so much more I could say, but I'll leave the rest with Jamie. But thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Township Council?
Any member?
Yeah. So the economic development team alongside Mayor James Barberio will welcome the following new businesses to Parsippany with ribbon-cutting celebrations. The Salad House on Friday, October 11th, at eight ninety-four, Route 46 West, at 10:30 a.m. Craftson's Farm, Saturday, October 26th, at 2352 Route 10 West, at 11:45 a.m. That One Painter, Friday, October 25th, at Eight Campus Drive, at 11 a.m. And La Plancha Restaurant, Saturday, November 2nd, 44 North Bevick Road, at 10 a.m. Public is invited. The next meeting in the Economic Development Committee, I heard there was some missed people on the last one. They had changed the date. This one is Wednesday, November 13th, at 6:30 at 90 East Halsey Road, third floor conference room. Public is invited. Please RSVP with Chairman Frank Cahill, 973-559-6000. And the Transparency Committee is meeting on the 15th at 6 o'clock here at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Any other member from township council? Okay, seeing none, moving along to the township attorney.
No report this evening, councillor President.
And the business administrator.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor President. Just a few quick announcements. As Mayor stated, we had a good meeting with Moody's. They were very happy with our progress. They did maintain our rating. And they basically, you know, they're impressed with our improved reserves that are set to hold in 2024. They specifically mentioned the township's strong underlying credit quality. And they like the diversity of projects that are coming into town to help the tax base. We discussed the warehouses. We discussed some of the housing. We discussed some of the good projects like Lifetime Fitness and a data center that's coming in. So they're really, really impressed with that. Wanted to talk about the, so voter registration deadline for the November general election is October 15th. The deadline for the last day to apply for vote by mail or absentee ballots is Tuesday, October 29th. So those two are upcoming. And early voting begins on October 26th and goes through November 3rd. There's eight different locations around Morris County that you can vote early in person if you'd like. We have all the information in our clerk's office. You can reach out to Kled and his team, and they can let you know, or the county clerk's office as well. The, there's going to be the trunk or treat this Saturday, or not this Saturday, on Saturday, October 26th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Smithfield. The admission is one bag of candy that you have to bring per child, so about fifty pieces. You can get more information at the rec by calling rec or going onto the website and signing up there as well. Should be a great day. The other thing that we need to talk about is October 14th is Columbus Day, celebrated. Town facilities will be closed. Columbus Day honors the Italian-Americans, and there's a big Italian-American influence in Parsippany that should be celebrated. It's up here on this panel, too.
You don't say.
And it's actually also Polish-American month, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hispanic.
Hispanic-American month, indigenous people month. It's, and today is Pierogi Day and Anne Marie Ferrara Day. Happy birthday. All have.
Mr. Cryan, can we get an update on the library? I know, I think you guys had met on that.
Yes.
Because I know they've been asking, and folks like to know.
Yes. Thanks, councilman. Mayor and I had a great meeting with the library and discussing some of the improvements that are needed there in Lake Hiawatha. There's, you know, we've talked about it at this meeting and other venues as well. They were given, they were awarded three million dollars as a matching grant to redo, to completely redo, the Lake Hiawatha library. So the township was going to put up three million, and they were going to get three million from the state. The cost of that project was somewhere between nine and twelve million, so it just was not feasible in that location. So we tried to go through a couple of different plans. Melissa, the librarian, was, you know, she's very interested and vigilant about trying to get the best for that facility. What was discussed was maybe having the township keep the three million dollar commitment to fix up that branch over there. Mayor and I toured it yesterday with our building maintenance supervisor, and it's going to cost much more than three million dollars to fix all that stuff, to get that library up and going. So it's a big issue.
Is that just for the repairs?
Just to get it back up and, you know.
What's like the current cost, do you expect?
We don't, we don't have an exact quote on it. So one of the things that we're going to do is contract with an architect to go in and try to cost some of this stuff out. But what Mayor had suggested and talked about is finding a different location for that branch that is very convenient for Lake Hiawatha folks, but also.
Cost effective.
Cost effective. Because you see some of the new libraries that are going up around the state, they're going up in brand-new locations. And that's how you're able to get a better bang for your buck and a better building. So we're looking at that. I don't know if Mayor wants to.
Yeah. So when we were in there, we're touring and all the repairs that need to be done, I actually felt we're going to put money into something that we're never going to get. We're going to be putting money into a project, into a library that is not going to even be up to date and par. I mean, just the HVA system alone will probably cost a million dollars in that area there. And whatever we fix doesn't even fix the problem. Nowhere near it. You still have to put in new computers. You're still going to do all these things. The bathrooms are outdated. The smell downstairs, the must. I don't know how you even get rid of that. The walls, the ceilings. There's only, in my opinion, and that's why we got an architect, two options. We find another location, or we demolish the one there and sell it. Because we're going to put money, we're going to put three million dollars into something that's not even twenty-five percent done. It's only twenty-five percent done, which means you got seventy-five percent more to do. And there's no way, I don't think the state will even consider giving us any more money, realizing that we're putting money into a bad project. So we have some options, and, you know, I don't know if we can do them. I don't know if I should, I can discuss it, I guess. But we have the Cossett property that we just purchased, which is eleven acres of land. And if we were to put a library there, it's really pretty much in the heart of Lake Hiawatha, next to the Oldwood School. And further down is Lake Hiawatha School. And I think that would be more cost-effective than this building here. It was built in 1948. It's outdated. And the ceilings are not the right height. It's not ADA accessible. So there's a lot we're going to have to do. And we're going to spend three million dollars to not even put a little crack in it. So, you know, we're going to get the cost estimate. We'll send it to the council, and we're going to have to decide what we want to do in the future with it. Of course, we talked about our fundraising. You know, they talked about some way to do a foundation because, but, you know, those can take years to get the amount of money. But, or there's a mechanism where we can still get the foundation, and whatever we bond, that we would receive that money back. It's the foundation money. So there's a lot of things we're going to have to decide we want to do with that. But I think to move out of Lake Hiawatha, it's no longer a Lake Hiawatha library. But it's, it's bad. It's in bad shape. And I don't, I don't feel it's in the best interest of us to use money and put it into a bad project. So if you ever want to take a tour of it, you know, I would recommend every council member to take a tour. And then you're going to realize, I mean, the foundation's cracked. All the entryways are cracked. And water's getting into almost every area, every doorway, every, just the roof. And I don't know how there's no mold in there, but they said there isn't any. But it's, it's in bad shape. So, and I'm not a building and maintenance person, but I can tell you this much. The minute I walked in, I said, this building's in bad shape. And so, and we can only repair so much. We have our building and maintenance superintendent. He's fixing, he's fixing, fixing stuff. And he even said, now, the boil system itself is like from probably 1970. It's going to have to be converted to gas, a whole new system. Right there, in my opinion, the two things are two million dollars, just to heat the place and to air condition it. So we'll have to make a decision. So we're going to hire an architect, and we're going to get a cost estimate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have no report. Moving along. Approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of the October 11th to a twenty-four regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of 10-124 through 10-324, which is three million, five hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. May I have a motion to approve the authorization for payment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Grefi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Ms. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Grefi?